Okay, we welcome everyone for Board of Commissioners meetings today. Ben Stanley, can you hear us?
I can hear you Commissioner Sagovic.
Are there any others that I don't see on the screen? Halleen, okay. Then with that, as we do with all Commissioners, we open with a prayer reading or thought followed by a pledge, and we ask someone from the audience to provide one of those two roles. Is there anyone who would like to volunteer to provide a reading, prayer, or thought? Would you sir? And would there be someone like to offer or lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Marty Larson. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity to attend and be at this meeting. We thank thee for the opportunities for the public to attend and voice our concerns and be engaged and see the decisions made for in our behalf. We ask thee to, thus the Commissioners, that they will heed the welfare of the public and be engaged in the issues and be guided and make good decisions that we can have peace and prosper and move forward. We thank thee for these blessings and ask for this, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Mayor. I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, how we will approach this particular meeting? We will go through the regular agenda, consider which ones we have no comments on, and they will move those items to the consent agenda. And when we have finished that, we will then go to work session, followed after that with the remaining on the regular agenda. So with that, are there any things that we should hold that need our discussion between one and 10?
Just double checking, I don't.
You have none?
No.
I have none. Then the next group would be 11 through 18.
I have items number 11 and 15.
11 and 15.
Those were the two I expected.
Okay, and I have... Do we need to discuss 13 Public Works? Rob?
If you'd like to, this is a... Starts the process for Soldier Summit?
Yes.
If you have some questions about it, Tim Taylor is here to answer those questions.
Just make sure that we're not tripping over on the projects that are initiated.
It's important to talk about it, Tim.
So I'll hold number 13.
Okay.
And then the number 19, 20, and 21, I understand, we have no comments, but number 22 we do? Is that correct still?
That's all I have from the Attorney's Office.
And HR said they did not have any others, so just 22 will strike.
22.
We'll strike the first three then, 19, 20, 21.
Fantastic.
Hey, I think that's it. Halleen, would you let us know what we just agreed to? Okay, and we'll discuss 22 and close. Okay. And that takes care of our consent agenda. Now we'll go into work session. And we have a presentation, I believe. Is Bureau of Land Management here? There you are. I wanted to grab you. Would you go ahead and start them? We've got a couple individuals from, a couple mayors, sheriff, and others that might want to speak to this after you finish.
Commissioners, it's good to be with you today. My name is Mike Gates. I'm the District Manager for the Bureau of Land Management West Desert District. This is actually my first opportunity to come before you. Our predecessors have been here before, Bill, Kevin, Oliver, and Matt Preston. They've moved on to different positions. I've got with me some of our current staff. Jessica Wade is our new Field Manager for the Salt Lake Field Office. Todd Marks is an Assistant Field Manager. I'm going to turn some time over to him to give the presentation. And then Cam Stevenson is our Supervisory Law Enforcement Officer, Ranger Lead for the District. We have an important issue to discuss with you today. Our 7.7 million acres that we administer in the West Desert, far beyond Utah County, is for the most part open to public shooting, recreational shooting. And we welcome that. It's a good place for the public to go and to participate in that. We think it's a multiple use. It's something that we support and we work with the public on every day. There are, from time to time, we have issues that come about where sometimes this becomes an issue. And we're starting to hear from the public that there are some areas in Utah County where recreational shooting has some interactions that are less than favorable. We believe one of those places is on West Mountain. And really, this becomes a public safety issue. We're just in the initial stages of responding to the local mayors, the community members in this area that have raised it to our attention. It's something that we are aware of. It involves target shooting where stray rounds go beyond and impact homes in the area. We're very close quarters on West Mountain and Lake Mountain, where we're very close proximity between the public urban interface and residents. And when this happens, sometimes there's some issues, there's some things that we need to address. And so with that, I will turn some time over to Todd. He's going to run through the PowerPoint presentation, which you'll see. And then I have Jessica and Cam with me. And then also, this area that we're going to look at, we administer very closely with Sitla, with the State Institutional Trust Land Administration. And we have a good partnership with that. I don't think Chris is here today with us. We've been working closely with Chris Fawcett, the Administrator with Sitla, and he's been with us to the meetings we've had with the mayors, but I know they are supportive. Really, what we're looking for today is support of beginning this process of what Todd's going to present to you. So I'll turn it over to Todd to run through the PowerPoint.
Yeah, good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for some time today. So as Mike kind of alluded to, you know, we've seen a number of issues, kind of specifically in the southern end of West Mountain with regards to target shooting and recreational shooting. Let's see here.
A question for you.
Go ahead.
Can we ask questions in between, or would you really do the presentation first and then questions after?
I think you're more than welcome to ask questions as they come up.
Okay.
Thank you. So Mike's already gone through introductions for us on behalf of the BLM. Just a quick overview of the issue, you know, we've given a little bit of a synopsis, but maybe I'll actually defer to Cam to kind of provide some of the history. That's really kind of prompted us taking a look at this. Cam's got kind of a direct knowledge on that, so.
Yeah. So, good afternoon first of all, but just to give you an overview, this has been an ongoing issue for the past several years. It was first brought to my attention by some of the residents in Genoa, who initially called myself in Santaquin City, to respond to their homes because they were finding stray rounds that were impacting their property, their outbuildings, and even as closest to their homes. And so we, you know, we filed those police reports, brought that to our management team, and initially, you know, engaged in a signing process, increased patrols, do everything that we could do to help mitigate some of that effort. And of course, over the past couple of years, it's just gotten worse. And the more severe cases of where these stray rounds have actually impacted those homes and have narrowly missed the residents inside those homes. And so it's, you know, it's something that we've taken steps to try to prevent through other measures outside of a closure, but those steps are proving to not be very successful. And so this has definitely been an effort and a problem or an issue over the past few years. Anything else?
No, I think that covers it. Thanks, Cam. Yeah, really, he provided a good overview there. I'd like to discuss some of the prior efforts. Cam touched on it a little bit, but I've been in the Assistant Field Manager role for about two and a half years now, and it's kind of really when we started having a lot of these efforts. But when we started first hearing about some of these impacts with neighboring residents, you know, some of the first steps we took were to increase our signage out there, you know, instructing people, educating people to choose proper backstops, you know, and just responsible shooting. We also increased patrols, both on the law enforcement side and as well as just on the recreation side. We had park rangers and recreation staff increase their patrols there, interact with staff or interact with members of the public that may have been shooting, you know, somewhat irresponsible or somewhat unsafely, you know, and really educate them, you know. And we've kept up those efforts probably over the last, you know, four years or so. And, you know, despite all those, you know, we've seen some of these incidents with the neighboring landowners increase. So, you know, we... So at that point, we decided to start kind of coordinating with all the stakeholders. You know, the first conversations we had were with Sitla, so the State Institutional Trust Lands Administration, just to see if they would be supportive. There is some lands that are involved adjacent to BLM as well that are potentially possible, potentially issues. Yes, we had discussions with them. They were supportive. You know, we stepped up those discussions, engaged with the mayors of the local cities and towns nearby, and that was just a couple months ago. You know, had really great discussions with them. They are all very well supportive of that. So really, our next step was to present this kind of proposal to you all and hopefully get your support. So as you can see here on this map on the screen, we are looking at the BLM lands and Sitla lands on the very southern end of West Mountain, kind of surrounding the Payson Dump area. That's where most of the recreational shooting on public lands takes place and also where most of, most of the impacts have been determined to have come from. So the acreage there, approximately 961 acres of BLM, 408 acres of Sitla are kind of the initial proposal there. And really, through public engagement process, that may change, but, you know, we still need to work through that process, so.
So some questions for you?
Sure.
There is in that, I don't know where it is because it's hard to see what the details are, but there are some areas where traditionally they've been doing some shooting. Is that a part of this? So, and then also there's, I think there's, it's not called motocross or ATV riding, it's right next to it. They're right, and that's, are you talking about that, that area? Is that down on that, kind of that southern end of it?
Yes, yeah, so.
You don't want to shut that down?
Where the majority of the shooting is taking place now is included within that area, as well as some of the additional lands further to the south. You know, that whole area there, just through some of our analysis, really provides some problem areas where, you know, potential target shooting could be, you know, impacting the people's homes specifically, you know, on the other side in Genoa there. And yes, there is a lot of ATV riding that occurs down there, specifically on the south side of the dump and the gravel pit there. So there's that kind of, let's see if this will...
While you're trying to get that, our proposal would just be a shooting closure. It would not include access or recreation, those types of things, ATV use, UTV use.
So when we went through this last time on the different mountain, they proposed, they started off with a big huge swath of land, which the county was against. I think it was like 7,000 acres. And we whittled it down because a lot of it didn't make sense that the closures were being done clear up on top of the mountain where target shooting is usually along a roadside because I can't imagine people taking their sandbags and hiking up to the top of the mountain to shoot. And so that's the reason why it was carved back significantly, also because of archaeological sites that were out there as well. That's the reason why we have kind of that little horseshoe on the other side of the lake. And so some of this looks like it's going clear to the top of the mountain. I'm not, I'm not sure where the roads are in there and what's going on, but that's, it looks like it's big huge swaths of land.
It is a pretty broad brush approach, but as I said, you know, through this, through this public engagement process, we, you know, we anticipate to receive that type of feedback and are open to adjusting those, kind of determine, depending on the feedback we receive.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that really is the point here. This is a, this is a first attempt of what we're coming to. This is by no means the end resolution of what we... It's far smaller than what they started with, with Lake Mountain, and so I think we learned some lessons there with that. I think that what we're hearing from the, you know, Cam and other law enforcement experts is that there are some low hills there, and perhaps it does, they don't provide enough of a relief to stop the bullets from going over the top of, or the rounds from going off over the top of it. So that's what we're concerned about there is perhaps there's just not that relief that's there. But as you, as you can see, as we move into this deeper country, that's not included in this, in this initial proposal. But, but you're right, and we need to look at it closer as we go through the public process and look at if maybe we've cut too much of a swath there. But it does make a good administrative boundary, that northern boundary of that is the road that comes up into that area. And so that's sometimes the things we need to consider are there are some good administrative boundaries, a good place to work off from so that we don't, that we're not, you know, having, you know, kind of a dissected way of doing that because there really is no access to the top. So you're right, I mean, if there's no access to it, it wouldn't make any sense to have that be a closure. We'll do the places where they, where they tend to be.
Then the other thing that we did was, we have, we have now a shooting range on the other side, which from what Public Works says is quite heavily used, and we're continually getting better and better at longer range shoots out there. But we have an active shooting area inside here that I know that is used probably by the bit. And where are they going to go? Because, I mean, if we close it, they're going to go just outside the, you know, those closures unless we have someplace for them to go. Now, I know that, I know that best, the mayor here from Payson, I know that they're looking at some, you know, some shooting options with companies coming in that would be fantastic, but we got to have a place for them to go.
I don't know if the mayor wants to speak to that. There is a proposal coming forward. I don't know if you want to speak to it or not.
I think that is an integral part of what we need to propose here because the people will want to go somewhere to shoot. And I believe we talked in Santaquin at the meeting that we, most of us were too, that there needs to be a place that people can go, go to. My input too was in reference to the Commissioner's statement. We are looking at a shooting range there, and whatever we do here, we do not want to restrict that availability of doing that. And that's further to the north from where I understand we're talking. So, so, and I do support that, and I believe all of our city councilmen would be there with us, but we just want to make, we're not against the Second Amendment, we're not against firearms, and we just want to make sure that we have a safe place for people to do that and protect lives and property.
Now, that one's going to be, that one you had to pay for, right?
Yes, it would be, it's a nonprofit that we're working, we're working with the BLM to go through some studies that need to be done. The entity is called CMP, Citizens Marksmanship Program, again, a 501(c)(3), and it would be a very nice addition to those that would like to be proficient with firearms.
Because, you know, over on, I mean, we have the shooting range on the other side over here, but on further north, you look at Israel Canyon, this few of those, they're, they're quite busy. And it's outside of the, of the closure.
I've never been to any of those, but I do know, I've talked to many citizens that have, I went up there to target shoot, and many of them refused to go back out there because it is dangerous, not only that the rounds do go into, into the Genoa area, but sometimes people don't think it through, and they're exposed to some rounds that are unintended. So some people are still going out, the others will not go out because they feel like it's dangerous.
Mayor, could you say your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Wright, Mayor of Payson.
My question...
He's in, he's around these parts, we know who he is.
I know he was too, but others might not.
My question was, can we do improvements on burms so that we can still use the range but not have them impacting Genoa, especially when they're finding rounds on the walls or inside houses? You want to handle that one?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're open to all suggestions. You know, that's something we can definitely look at. You know, through, through the, through the Dingle Act, there's been some, there's some directives in there for us to, to start, you know, to develop recreational target shooting sites on public lands. And, you know, we're still kind of wrapping our heads around all that, how that's going to look. But, you know, certainly I think there's, there is more of an appetite to, to develop, you know, you know, kind of more formalized shooting areas, and that could be something we could certainly entertain.
Because if you can have a fixed azimuth with direction that they're going to shoot will help, plus improvements on the burms, and that I'm not familiar if we've improved those or not. That's what I was asking a question. Can we, can we change the azimuth in which the direction of fires are going and improve the burns at the same time? Has that been discussed?
I think where we're at is a comprehensive plan needs to be put in place here, and that would certainly be part of it. I think that, you know, we just kind of finished with Lake Mountain, and now we're moving here, and so it does need to be dressed in that, in that manner. I think that the urgency that the public has come to us with this is the thing that's pushing us towards this type of a proposal. But certainly, that, you know, there might be some areas where we could look at, and no decisions have been made. So I think that certainly that can be part of what we look at, and if there's some opportunities there.
Let me ask Mayor Larson, who's the mayor of Genoa. What are the recent reports you have of impacts to homes, properties?
Yeah, so it's happened over several years, and our law enforcement gets a fair amount of calls, and I get a fair amount of calls that something needs to be done, and they're not fast enough and strong enough and put it enough. And so, so we are, I'm glad to be here. But with that, some ballistics studies had been done because you wanted to make sure that we present you with facts that's real. It takes quite a bit of time to do that. So ballistics were done to show where the shells found and where it can be fired from. And I'm not super strong on science because sometimes you can bend it, but, but the science showed us there, so we could act upon it, take it a bit further, and I think it's received great review. I think it is very rare to see Genoa, Santaquin's law enforcement, Payson's law enforcement, the county sheriff, the mayors. I took it to my, the council, and to have unity amongst that many, you know, how many times three people have unity, but to have that many people have unity in seeing the problem, seeing where it's coming from, and being focused on safety. And as we had a meeting a month or so ago with all these entities there, we saw this same map, and we discussed it. And Payson can have some great economic value by having a shooting range and what they're thinking about. And as we came that, I think that that's as small as you can get. And there are some natural barriers. The, on the top side, the north side of the boundary on the red is the road that goes up to the dump. If you, Payson Dump. If you get on the other side of that, there is a natural barrier not to shoot across the road into traffic, into Genoa's way. So that road, I think, is a minimum barrier to get it across the road, so they point north instead of being on the south side of the road and pointing south. And so as far as the map and the geography and so forth, I think that is a minimum. I think soon as you cross the road, your guns point south instead of north because the natural barrier of the road and the traffic and all the traffic going up to the dumps. So as far as that's concerned, I think that is a natural barrier, a natural, that, that's about as small as you can get it. That's about as much as you'd want to give up without just not solving the problem and having done all this for nothing.
This past year, how many reports have you had of rounds come into private property?
So, so the residents, they do it to the sheriff, I mean, to Santaquin Police, which covers Genoa too. And then Police Chief Hurst contacts me when he's received three or four or so forth and say, hey, I've done this, done as much as I can, we need to go a bit further. So when I receive it, it's when it's become a problem, not every round, not every, I don't get a report every incident happened. I get a report when there's a group in a, group in a short distance saying, hey, this is really just unacceptable. And I have had, oh, seems like every three months, you know, there's a little wave, and it seems like quite a few incidents, and I have a few residents who come to me and say, hey, a little bit critical, saying, you're the mayor, you're over this, why are you not getting anything done? What's your problem? Can't you act on the welfare of our citizens and do that? And, and I say, hey, we're working on it, we got this meeting, and we're going to talk about it. And they say, well, I hope you do more than talk about it, why don't you take some action? This is a serious issue. So that's the reports I get, and that has brought to our town council. And Genoa is a, I mean, it's growing, so it's getting more houses and stuff, but it is a farming community where we pheasant hunt, you know, and it's getting harder and harder because of safety. And so, and we are very strong in gun rights, and we are very strong in your right to use your land how you want, you know, and don't you dare. And so, so this issue is coming before you with some residents in a community that feels strong in that area. And so I compare it, if I was to use a personal example, I'm a farmer, and I love growing things, not an orchardman, but I'm a farmer. And we also have quarries that make rock, and I have built some ground and needed some gravel for my roads, and that's a necessity. But I do know that gravel pits that put out an awful lot of dust, and it sticks to the cherries and creates dust mites, is a huge economical problem for the cherries. They have to pray for dust mites, their fruit's not as big, and economically, it's disastrous. But me, myself, I need gravel to build a road, and I'm a farmer and want them to do that first. And so people say, well, are you for the gravel and development, letting them have their rights and use their hillside as they want? Or are you for the farmers and letting them grow fruit and, and be economically survivable and sustainable and having them do? So that's the question I get. Well, that's not the question I'm presenting to you. I think gravel pits have a place, and orchards have a place, and they can both be successful. On a shooting range, I think shooting range has a place, there should be a place, and they have a right to do what they want with their land. But you also have residential, and it is not a very good mix when you have a shooting range in a residential, impacting residential, where you're finding rounds in your house, in your hay barn, little holes in your tin shed, you know, on your outbuilding. That's not compatible. That is what I'm saying, is where people shoot in that area and a residential area, agriculture, on the other area is not a compatible use. I'm not advocating to build more homes, and I'm not advocating to stop shooting. I am saying that as that is now, it is incompatible. It is, and for safety and health and the welfare of those people, it needs to be changed.
What Mayor Wright had talked about a few minutes ago in BLM, is it something, would this help alleviate the problem? And the problem actually, not helps?
So I think, I think that road going up to Payson Dump is really a natural barrier. And so I think if you go to that point, that does solve the problem because it puts it across the traffic road. It puts it so they're pointing north instead of pointing south, and so the direction, projection of your shooting range switches. You have a natural barrier of a road, and the part you have marked off is low-lying hills that go up to the top, which those can go over. You get further north, that's where the real mountain is, they will not go over. And so, yes, I do see that it can be successful to the north and it is harmful to the south.
So the, the blue hatched area, the Sitla land, if that was not closed off, would that be affected? Would that affect? Because everything you're talking about is over on the east side.
Yes. Yeah. Well, so some of the blue goes up to the ridge, you know, I mean, it's in the Sitla land. And I do believe.
Of course, Sitla can do whatever they want. They can close it down if they wanted to right now.
Yeah. So, so I do believe, um, uh, law enforcement is an issue. And I think if you draw a line in the middle of a field or something like that instead of a natural barrier, the person who's supposed to follow the signs and live the rules, it's harder for them and there's not that natural barrier. And so having that straight line coming from the Payson dump and you can see over and you see both sides is a natural barrier that you can post, that you can ticket, that you can patrol, that you can do something. And I think on the blue area, if you cut that back, and if you cut that back, I think it could be extremely minimal. But if you cut that back, I think that does get rid of a natural barrier, saying this line and you're on top and you can see that road and so forth. Yes, I think the blue area they have covered has to be in there. Maybe you cut back 500 feet, but then you get off a natural barrier, a natural straight line. And I think your problem is still there for law enforcement, for posting, for understanding that saying this is the area. So I would not move, move it on the blue.
Yeah, I'm not familiar enough with it. I'm just looking at it and wondering how much of it's on the top of a hill. And, and I guess the biggest question, and since I went through this already with the other, the other shooting range and with Kevin Oliver and all the way back to DC, we went back there and, and, you know, and the success that we had was that everybody locally was on the same page, which was completely unusual. I know that when DC saw it and the Trump administration looked at it, they were actually pretty shocked that with the county, the cities, law enforcement and even the local communities, you know, that are second amendment groups or shooting groups, they were, we kind of had wrangle them in because they, they said they weren't going to say yes or no, but we got them to play neutral. And the reason why we were able to play neutral, they were, they were, they would play neutral with us is because we looked at it and addressed all the, all the concerns. Safety is a big concern. That's of course, we got to address the safety issues like you're talking about. And then it's got to make sense. Common sense has got to come into play with this so that it's not just this wide swath of, let's just see how much we can, you know, we can close down with it. And the third one was, we gave another avenue or an out for them to go somewhere. And so far, I mean, I see, I see the safety concerns and I see that we're trying to hopefully keep it as small as possible, but I don't see where, where they're going to go. Because all they do is go around the corner or around the other corner, you know, until we have something up there that, you know, because they're going there right now in that area and shooting. And they, they see that as their shooting range. And so unless we provide something else, then all we're doing is dispersing them to somebody else's neighborhood or potentially somewhere else. And so unless we have that, I don't know, I don't know how we come together for sure to make sure that it all fits, all the pieces fit so that we can go together, you know, back to DC and get some of this taken care of.
Yeah. So, so, so I think what they're requesting is an emergency shutdown so we can take care of the safety issues and whatever for first or immediately because that's urgent. That's a real necessity right now. And then work, work on, I think the emergency part, which is a, a short term fix. It's just now, it's not long term and maybe you don't want that there. But I do think that is necessary at this point because of it. And I do realize that this time of year, maybe a few weeks ago was the worst time because people are, are going to go hunting and they want to scope their, they want to get their scope right and they need to shoot it and see. And they want to do that. So when they go up in the mountains and that is a, a need and it has to. And they want to do that before they go hunting. And, and so this time of year, you get more activity than usual because that's a, a general demand. And we need to cover that demand. But I, no matter where they go at this time, I think this has to be addressed, even with the other, but this has to be addressed and now and not addressed necessarily in a permanent matter that's just saying we've solved the problem. But to go on with that, but I would hate to kick this down the road with this severe of a problem, saying we're going to have to solve that along with this. Because I think this in and by itself has to be addressed now.
And BLM on an emergency basis can shut down for, I think it's a year, isn't it? You have a one-year emergency shutdown if needed and necessary for safety reasons.
And actually some of that guidance has changed with, with passage of the Dingle Act. There's actually discussion in there regarding emergency shooting closures. And, and especially with respect to target shooting. Those can only be done in 180 day increments and they can only be renewed three times. So really the emergency shooting closure could only be in place for a maximum of about 18 months. During that time, we would have to work on a more permanent solution, which maybe just speaking towards next steps here. You know, if we were to enact an emergency closure, we would likely try to work more towards a, you know, a longer term shooting closure via a plan amendment, you know, land use plan amendment. Which, you know, and actually both, both processes, you know, involve tons of engagement with the public and stakeholders and whatnot. So, you know, I think we, those are kind of definitely areas where we could look at alternatives. You know, engage with the public, figure out, you know, maybe where's, where's another place we could put in, you know, a bit more of a formal, open shooting area that's safe and that kind of fits their needs as well as still kind of meeting the public safety goal. So.
I asked Sheriff if he could speak to it because he's got a pretty good feel of the lay of land on people's attitudes and whatnot. If there's some alternatives he might have as well, it could offer.
Yeah, I got all the answers.
Absolutely do.
I don't disagree with what's being said, you know, we, we, we had met with BLM and with Santaquin a couple of years ago when we were made aware of these issues. And so I've been out there, I've looked at it, you know, we, we worked with them on the new signage and getting signs up and trying to do more of a, an educational route to get people to be aware of these issues. Some of the issues I was seeing that, that, you know, and first off, I am 100% second amendment. So if we're talking second amendment, I'm always going to back that. But, you know, this is getting into not so much the second amendment, it's getting into a safety concern. And so the safety concern here is these rounds are in fact landing in people's property and into some of their outbuildings and other things. And as you look at the layout, you know, I, I like your, your thoughts on a berm, but as you look at this layout, I'm not so sure a berm is going to fix some of it because some of these I have to, I have to think are just pure recklessness, you know, for, I mean, the mountain's tall enough that it's a good backstop and they're still sending rounds over that mountain. So there's some recklessness going on here, which is unfortunate that a few reckless shooters ruin it for the rest who are not that way. But for, for me, I agree with everything Commissioner Lee that you've been saying. I think that if this moves forward, that we need an alternative. We, we have somewhere on the north end. It would be nice to have somewhere on the south end. I love what Mayor Wright's doing. I think that's a great thing. I, I would think, you know, if they can pull that off, that's fantastic. It's phenomenal. I would love to go and shoot there. I'm just listening to what they're going to have. But I also think it would be advantageous for us to work for the county, to work with BLM and other stakeholders to have an area that is open to the public, that they're not going to have to pay a fee to go into. Because even if the fee is nominal, there are still a group of people who won't pay it and they'll just go shoot somewhere and will still have a problem. So I love the idea of working together to find somewhere that we could do something similar to what we've done on the north end of the county, on the south end to provide that avenue for shooters. Because the, the safety issue does need to be addressed. It's, you know, even if it's just one round, well, that's one round too many that if it, you know, it finds it's the wrong person at the wrong time, we don't recover from that.
Question I have is can we do something without shutting it down permanently and allow shooters to still use the general range? By changing the direction of shooting? That's the question I don't have an answer for. Thanks, Sheriff.
I, I think that that's the balance we'll have to try to strike with this. And I, Commissioner Lee, I really hope that we can get to, you know, there was, there were so many good things said about the Lake Mountain scenario, the way we went about it. That's what we're trying to replicate here. So our intent would be to, you know, to pursue the, the, the emergency closure as we're being requested and, and, and petitioned by the public to do. But in the meantime, in that 18 months is really go hard at trying to get the approval for the, the, the range that's been proposed. And, and, and I think that a plan for north, you know, there, there is a lot of area, much more area to the north that could be looked at and, and focused, the public towards to utilize for shooting. It's, you know, like I said, like I began with, our, our intent is to keep a vast majority of public lands open to shooting. We don't want, we, we really approach this tenderly and gingerly. We don't want to do it, but it is sometimes out of necessity.
When you say to the north, how far to the north?
Well, the, the rest of the mountain, West Mountain would be open to shooting. So this is the only place, the only, in red and the Sitla would be the only areas that we're proposing or looking at for a shooting closure. So the, the rest of West Mountain, the remaining areas and Lake Mountain that aren't closed would still be open. Further to the west, there's some, there's some public land to the south. Those areas are all still available for open recreational shooting.
I recognize you can't turn things on a dime, but is there, can you set up an alternative location?
If we go too far to the west or too far to the south.
Yeah.
We're not really known for having awesome roads in that area. Not really easy to get to. We need somewhere that is easy to get to, that is an alternative for people. Otherwise they will find alternatives that we don't like.
Let us get our maps out and let us look at it and see if there's some areas that could be opportunity.
We get you to come back in relatively short time, four, six weeks.
We will do that. Yeah, we will do that. Again, we're just in the initial phases of this. There's a, there's a lot of things we need to do, just even getting the emergency closure in place. I know that there's an urgency for it. The Dingle Act puts in place some public requirements, public input requirements that we need to do. But yeah, we'll, we'll come back to you in a month.
Yeah, I would like, you know, if we need to put in an emergency closure, it would be nice for there to be signs telling people where to go. So I think that's kind of the next priority in my mind is finding an alternative for them. So that if we shut down this area, there's somewhere that's reasonable for them to go. I mean.
You're talking about some type of interim step that between now and the time we get the, the shooting range put in place.
Exactly, exactly. Because other, I mean, telling them, you know, out by Eureka is probably not going to be sufficient.
Okay. Well said.
The pent up need to do the squeeze, so.
Yep.
So if you could work with the mayors on this, would be helpful to get something alternative while you close, while you change the layout of this thing.
Okay. Yep.
And I just, I wanted, I didn't do a good enough job painting the picture for you all. So I wanted to provide a little bit more explanation or expound on that a little bit as far as where the issue's coming from. And so that, the, the report, the ballistics report the mayor touched on, we, we asked the state crime lab to come out and analyze the ballistics and forensics of each round that has impacted one of the residents. And so they, they took a year on that report. Took them about a year to get that report back to us. Our hope was that that would narrow down specific shooting lanes and not necessarily that whole section that they could point to a specific shooting lane or location. So the closure would have been much smaller. The results of that, that report were that the stray rounds were most likely coming from West Mountain and that was their, their summarization of it. And so.
Big area that.
Didn't help us much.
Acasmathon.
Yeah. And then, and personally, I'm a resident of Santaquin and so some of the, the Genoa residents, they'll, they'll call me, they'll call Santaquin city and I'll respond out there when they have a stray round impact. And every time I go out there, I get this personal onus of, of being like crap, you know? If, if this were to, if it hit somebody or even somebody's livestock and I knew about that problem, I'd feel very guilty and I didn't want that on my conscience. And so that's why we started working towards some kind of solution. And that's when we got the state crime lab involved in hopes that they would help us come up with a better idea as far as what we needed to do. And then as far as what, you know, that the red that's closed, well, where we were estimating the problem occurring was target shooters were putting their targets very high on the hill. They were hiking, they were, they were parking at one of those lanes and hiking their targets a couple hundred yards up the mountain. And so they were pointing their, their, their guns, which are typically for a portion of those residents that were having stray rounds were 30 caliber rounds, very large caliber rounds. And so those were the long range shooters that were putting their targets high on the mountain and not utilizing the backstop as it was intended. And part of our signage was preventing that. We were able to say, don't put your target more than halfway up the hill or you will be sighted because it was, it was creating a hazard. And so that was part of our, our implementation to try to prevent that from occurring. And then as you see the Sitla portion, as you go around that, that south section of West Mountain and start to creep onto Sitla, you'll have two houses, those are the two houses that have had rounds go through the, their roof of the house. Two houses right in that saddle or right off that saddle. And we've had targets placed right on the roadway on BLM and on Sitla where people are pointing directly at those homes.
See, and that's kind of my point. I mean, that's irresponsible shooting in the first place. So if we don't give an alternative that's easy, I mean, the people that are doing this are not responsible shooters because a responsible shooter always looks at their background. These people are obviously not doing that. So if we don't give them an easy alternative, then the shutdown's not going to do any good.
Absolutely. And that's always law enforcement's concern and I, I'm in complete agreement with Sheriff Smith. I think, you know, our, our biggest concern is where are they going to go? Anytime you put in a closure, they're, they're going to go somewhere else. And so we know in our, in our meeting with, meetings with the city, it was brought up that people are currently using the WMA section that's on the Utah County, Jeb County line off of the Mona Highway where the power line road is. There's a lot of shooting that goes, goes and takes place there. And then of course down by Lincoln Beach where there's more established area that, that a lot of the shooting is. But again, I, agreement that, that we do need an alternative. I think that would be the best solution as this closure takes place. But also very concerned for the residents of Genoa as well, that we need to do something so we don't have that more serious issue occur where somebody or something gets hurt. Hopefully that helped provide a better overview of where we were thinking the stray rounds were coming from.
We'll, we'll get back on your agenda and be back. We're still working on this.
Mayor Larson?
I spoke on behalf of.
I spoke behalf on Genoa. I do not live where the rounds hit and I understand and I see something that needs done. I do have one resident here with us today where the bullets does hit his house and does end that. And I just wonder if you could hear from him for just a couple of minutes because he is directly related. Would it be okay if I have Dan Taylor to speak to you for a very short minute? Because he is the one that the bullets hit.
Certainly.
Maybe before he speaks, real quick, if you don't mind, we've put together a bit of a briefing paper and some additional attachments for you all, if, if I can hand that out to you.
My name's Dan Taylor. I live in Genoa. I've received probably 14 bullet holes in my sheds, my barns and my roof. I've picked up another eight rounds and them's the rounds that went to the state crime lab in my driveway, right next to my back door. It's non-stop shooting up there. It's not a matter of second amendment right. It's a matter of public safety that something has to be done. That's just me. The neighbor right below me is, I think he's about seven bullets. And another just below that has had several bullets. The bullets that I'm getting is probably in a half acre of 150 acres. You can only imagine how many bullets is outside of that driveway and shed. So that, that's what kind of volume we're looking at.
Where, where are you at on this map?
I would be probably one of the northeast corners of the Genoa yellow part. So I'd be directly west of the blue. Right in there somewhere.
Right in there?
Mm-hmm.
They're over there? Wow.
No, over where the arrow is. Yes. Right into there. When the crime lab come out, we stuck dowels and pencils in the holes in my sheds and in my barns. And as near as we could tell, every bullet was coming from the dump area, the West Mountain dump area.
So they're traveling. Not if I go out. If I go off that scale down below.
Well, they're, they're coming, they're being marked over the mountain.
Right.
And, and most, I had, did have a couple of twenty-two caliber bullets, which are two twenty-three or two twenty-two, twenty-two, two fifty type bullets, but most of them was thirty caliber bullets that I turned in. I mean, it's, it's scary. It's, it's non-stop. When the, the shooting starts, we just go to the house. I mean, it's, you don't want to be outside because you never know where one of them's going to hit. You know, it's scary for me and my wife, my family and anybody else in the area.
Do you have any stock that's been hit by this?
Pardon?
Do you have any stock that have been hit by this?
Haven't had any stock hit by them, but I've got bullet, I think there's three bullet holes in my mangers and I pulled one bullet out of, out of a trough, a grain trough. I mean, I've lost animals, but I can't say that that's what they died of.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions at all?
No, this is a work session, so we can't, we can't take action here, but we want to hear what you have and so.
Yeah, certainly. And we, we certainly look forward to, to working with you more and, and, and kind of solving this issue, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now will move on to the next work session item. Thank you for coming and I'm looking forward to seeing you come back pretty soon, along with the mayor. Thank you. And now we have a work session from our HR department director.
Oh, thanks. Hi, I'm Ralph Barnes, HR director. Been asked by the chair of the commission to speak to some, some possible changes to the standards of conduct policy. And then, so I'm just going to highlight some of the larger changes, the more, you know, significant changes, explain kind of why we're looking at this. And then of course you'll have the opportunity to ask any questions and then hopefully we'll get it on agenda.
Good.
So why are we updating it? This is a super important, you know, policy. It's utilized regularly by HR, by the attorney's office and even, you know, by supervisors, by managers, department heads and occasionally employees. It really is, you know, sort of a guide that we utilize to establish, you know, consistency and, and the application of discipline. And so it's, it's very important and it's used on a regular basis. So I think a lot of the other, you know, policies actually reference this policy. So it's, it's, it's a key policy. We wanted to add some, you know, clarity to the expectations. The policy does set, you know, some expectations on how we expect our employees to essentially, you know, conduct themselves while they're at work and even while they're not at work. You know, behavior is very important. We expect our employees to, you know, behave in certain ways and we want to make sure that's clear. I mean, you could just say that we want our employees to always be good and not do bad things, right? That could be our conduct policy. But we found through experience that it's often good to have examples and so that an employee can kind of hang their hat on something and that really understand it. We also found through experiences we're having here at the county, there were some things that weren't, you know, even addressed in the policy that were probably very important, just examples of, you know, conduct that would be considered inappropriate that we just hadn't ever listed. Now, we do have a list of items in, in the policy that are considered serious violations of conduct. There's no way you could ever list every possible serious conduct of violation, but you want to have a pretty good list that's, you know, comprehensive. So at least an employee has a really good, and not just employees, but everyone has a very good idea of what is okay and what's not okay. So we had found there was, you know, some holes in that.
When's the last time this was updated?
Uh, it's, it was, you know, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
It was updated in twenty twenty-one, like the middle of the year.
Right.
Yeah. And then last but not least, there wasn't really anything that talked about elected officials and how the conduct of an elected official may or may not be handled by either, you know, the commission, the attorney's office or the HR office. So, and there are some things that, that can and can't be done with elected officials. So we just wanted, wanted to clarify how that looks. So at the very, you know, core of the policy is these, you know, statements in the beginning, which really just set the tone for how we expect our employees, you know, to behave. They are expected to, you know, comply with the rules, you know, policies set forth by, you know, both whatever it is they do is, in their job at Utah County, but also, you know, set by the departments. You know, departments can set their rules as well. They have to be approved by the commission, but they can set their own rules and those will be on top of the HR rules. And then it, it goes on to say that we're concerned about affecting the efficiency, harmony, good order of Utah County. Very, very broad, very high level, but it, it says a lot about what we expect. We expect Utah County and Utah County employees to be a good example and to represent what we want the citizens of Utah County to be and how, how we want them to act. We also don't want an employee of Utah County to do something that would cause the public to lose faith in Utah County. We are very important and we want to make sure that we remain being seen as such because an employee can go out and do something terrible and it reflects badly on Utah County. So that's very important. It's obvious to say that if it's a federal state rule or law, you know, those are always in play. We, we want to make sure our employees understand they must follow those, which seems obvious. And then there's things about how you do your job. Are you inefficient? Are you incompetent? Do you not maintain skills or performance levels? So these are things that we expect of our, all our employees. We expect our employees to come in and work. We expect them to work from clock in to clock out. We expect them to perform results. And this, again, this is important for our employees to understand that this isn't a place where you can just coast. We want you to come in and add value and be a valuable use of, of taxpayer dollars. It's, I, I take it very seriously. I know you take it very seriously and that's the expectation that needs to be, you know, passed on to employees. Any, any comments or questions?
I've gone through it several times. Appreciate the adding elected officials in it. Over the years, spending thirty years in Marine Corps, I see some contradictions and so there's been some lessons learned from me over the time. And I thought we need to include anyone in the county to be held on the same standard as everyone else is. And I didn't want a gap that I saw in this thing and that's why I wanted to update this.
Good. Well, that's something interesting to me. It, it, that's something I found interesting when I came to Utah County is, is elected officials are special. They aren't necessarily treated like employees or appointed employees even, you know, there's things they can do and they have a, some authority and that's great, they should. But there's also a level of responsibility as well, as, as we had talked about. So some of the changes that we added, this is very high level. We want to make sure, as you had said, that this, these rules apply to everyone, you know, personnel, which includes elected officials, appointed officials, volunteers, interns, employees, really anyone who comes into Utah County and provides any service whatsoever is covered by this policy. We expect anyone on the premises performing a service to abide by these, these rules in this policy. I think that is something that's important because in the past it just said employee. An employee is really a limited, you know, the way we use it is, is fairly limited. Something else that wasn't clear, although it seemed obvious to me, is that if there is a serious violation of conduct, the supervisor must, you know, take immediate action. That wasn't always happening, that doesn't always happen. Sometimes we find out in HR months, weeks, years later about something that's happened that's been serious, that should have been, you know, taken action on much sooner. So we want to make sure that it's clear that this is something that needs to be handled immediately and that, you know, we're here to help essentially in HR and make sure it's handled properly. And that, that goes with the last one, you know, human resources must be notified. The part on here I meant to add, but I, I didn't is the other part is that I do intend, we do intend as soon as this is approved to send out training to all the, all the personnel at Utah County so they understand these changes and these updates and, and the expectations. We do want to make sure that there's clarity and no misunderstandings. And this would be an ongoing training, either annually, semi-annually, not sure about that. But I do feel strongly that employees may or may not understand how important this is. Any questions?
From my part, I've read through this and I'm very happy with the direction it's going. Thank you.
My only question is, obviously the code of conduct applies to all personnel regardless of status. I love that, including, you know, like contractors. The question is, we do know there are certain things that we can and can't do under law depending on whether someone's a contractor, whether they're an appointed employee, whether an elected official, as long as we're in compliance with those.
That's very true. Matter of fact, I think Rob suggested that we add the, add the clause as authorized by law.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. That's, I think that's a good clause.
Make sure that we don't overreach because we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we're being fair and we're following the law. But yeah, it's an excellent point. Yeah, thanks, Rob. These are just some of the things that we've added that have the elected officials, the legislative body. Now, this is out of state code. This isn't Utah County code. Now, you could say, well, why is this in here? It's in state code. Well, I think it's a good reminder that you, the legislative body have power to, you know, initiate an investigation of anyone in the county if it, you know, pertains to the county or its affairs, which really is just about anything. So you, anyone of you can initiate an investigation. And I think that's important, it's an important reminder, depending upon what the investigation about or who it's about, let's say it's another commissioner. It doesn't have to be the board of commissioners. It can be a commissioner who can actually, you know, initiate. And I'm not suggesting that you start investigating each other. I'm not, I'm not saying, please don't. But I am, I just, I'm, I'm saying that this is something that can be utilized if there is especially another elected official who's maybe involved in malfeasance. There's a, there is, there is a mechanism because there, there generally is a feeling, oh, it's elected official, you can't do anything. Well, that's not necessarily true. There are some things that can be done. So generally you can't, you know, remove them from office. That has to be done by a, a judge, but you can at least start an investigation. We've also put in here, if you do have a violation of conduct that would be similar to an employee, now, if we should change that to personnel. Anyway, I'll have to think about that line right there now that I think about, now I read it. The county, you know, commission may censure that, which I, 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 I think everyone knows about that, but it's, I, I don't know if we really had any, you know, guidelines. So we're saying right now that if elected official does something that otherwise another employee would be held, held accountable for, some, some action can and should be taken. That's really what that is saying. There is a state law that outlaw, outlines what can and can't be done. And if you want to know more about that, I have an expert in the audience, you know, Paul Jones is willing to step in and speak to that if you have any questions about that, you know, state statute. Anyone have any questions about the state statute on elected officials? Okay.
The only, the only comment I would have is they can, I think one person could initiate an investigation, but they're not going to be able to spend any money because it takes the vote of at least two commissioners to spend money.
Maybe you guys should have an account for this. Just throwing that out there.
Just, just saying you can ask all the questions you want.
That's actually a very good point.
But one person can't unilaterally spend money, the taxpayers' dollars.
Right, yes. About that. The last one just talks about kind of, you know, the process. In this case, I would be expected to notify each one of you, you know, individually, which I think is great, promptly involve the county attorney and, you know, each one of you. And then there were, depending upon who the elected official is, we'd make a decision on whether to do the investigation internally or to bring in an outside investigator, you know, depending on, on the nature of the violation. And, and luckily we have none of these ever, so it's not going to ever happen, but at least we have something in place, right? Okay, any questions on elected officials? Oh, questions?
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, so you.
Commissioner Lee, do you have?
Okay. You'll see this on the agenda next week.
Yeah. Okay, we've now finished the work session. We're going into our regular session items and the first item here is eleven. Commissioner Lee?
Yes, thank you. Commissioners?
Right, I know there's been, oh, go ahead.
Do you mind if I address the board on this issue? This is the county attorney's policy procedures. So last time we met, we continued this matter for two weeks at the commission request and requested that my office provide kind of a, some information as to what of the proposed policies and procedures that the county commission would be likely to approve this, this day. So last night I sent you a list of all of those. I also, as part of an email, I had a, a motion that was drafted as part of that. I received a phone call from Jeff Gray today, the county attorney potentially elect soon. And he, I don't know if he sent you all an email back. I've got a copy of it. I don't know if you've all got a copy or not. He made a couple of re, small revisions to the, the motion and, and then was satisfied with that. And so I know I sent it to you, I, I know I saw that, but Commissioner Lee, you know, if you got a copy of it, Commissioner Parrish Gardner, I can read the motion that he has revised and is satisfied with. And I am happy if you'd like me to, to go over the list of policies and procedures that you would be likely to, if you were to approve them today, would be approving. One, that he asked me to take off that list was the very first one, which was point, 1.02 organizational structure. That was put on the list, just so you know, because that's what's on our staffing plan currently. And his opinion is that he's going to change that probably come January. So he's fine with all the rest that are on that list, but for the first one, that, the list that I provided to you that last evening. So I'm happy to walk through every one of these if you like, discuss any questions you have, explain what, what was going on here, why we're doing this.
Well, if I could, if I could jump in since I have this. And thank you for the work and I know it's been painful and, and we're still friends. So I think that's great.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, even though we went back and forth, back and forth. In, in looking at this too, some of my concerns, and I think we're getting to the point to where they're alleviated, and that is, is that I don't see it necess, needed or necessary for us to be voting on something in the, in any department in which we've already voted on when it comes to, it's already in the county policies or procedures. If it's outside of the county policies and procedures, then I think that the, the department head can bring it to the commission to say, this is going to be different than county policies and procedures that we have in place and therefore the county legislative body needs to vote on it because it is different than what we have. And I, and I, I see some of those in here, but it's, it's interesting because the very first one that, that you mentioned from Jeff Gray was one that I highlighted right off the bat, that I, I, I do, I do believe that every department, department head should have the flexibility within their organizational structure to adjust as needed and necessary what they, what they, they have according to their staffing plan so that they can, they can maneuver to get the work done that they were either elected for or appointed to. And so that was one that I originally just, you know, clicked off and said, okay. And then, and the reason for that is that if the legislative body votes on that, then if there's a change in that, it would have to come back before us, you know, to go through with that whole process again. And I think that that's just, that's just cumbersome and so I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I don't mind if we go through every single one of them. I have, I've ticked off the ones where I have some concerns with and others that I'm fine with and the majority of them, I'm fine with leaving on there. But I, either way, commissioners, either way you want to go through it.
Let, let me just highlight one example for you. The first, the, I guess the second one, and that's under 2.0 animals. Currently the county policies, procedures are different, I mean, sorry, the county attorney's policy procedure are different than what is in, you've already approved. approved as part of the, the building policies, procedures. So this modification is to bring those consistent. So we, right now, the county attorney's office is slightly different than what you've already approved for countywide. So we're trying to fix these issues even before Jeff Gray gets here, which is why this is here and why, when I talked to Jeff today, I think he's fine with all of those that are on here, but for the first one, as I mentioned.
So the question I have on number two, on that second one with the animals, though, is, is that the policy and procedure that I think you're trying to get alignment with is already current policy and procedure with the county?
It is a part of the Utah County Facility Use Policy 2.6 Sub G, which allows service animals to be utilized in the building under certain circumstances, not, and it's only trained service animals, not, not, what do they call it, relief animals?
Comfort.
Comfort animals, not those. It's, it's serviced animals. The county attorney's policy procedure is a little bit different than that. This is to bring us back into compliance, if you will, with that. So that's what this is doing today. This is to bring us in compliance with that. And all of these, you'll, if you go through all of these, you'll see, essentially, that's what we're doing. We're trying to get and make sure we're not out there. And there are some times when we have differences that have been approved by previous commissions. And so we're trying to bring those into current, which you, which you've currently adopted. Also, be, be aware, you have adopted revised policies, HR policies with new numbers.
Right.
And our numbers in our county attorney policy procedures do not coincide with those new numbers. So that's also what's happening here, is, is just to refer the correct numbers. So there's not a lot of meat, if you will, to what's left here, that what you're being approving. You're mostly just trying to make, again, make it so we don't have a conflict. Number one. Number two, bring it into your current versions that you have. Again, your policies and procedures, the HR policies and procedures, numbers have been changed over the last three or four years. And these, this is meant to bring that into compliance. And finally, and I mentioned this before, when Jeff Buwan was here in 2011 and 12, he adopted a set of policies, procedures. When David Levitt came in in 2018, he adopted a set of policies, procedures, but did not vacate Jeff Buwan's set of policies, procedures, which has become problematic, because we have two separate policy procedures that govern every attorney and legal assistant, et cetera, in the, in the Utah County Attorney's Office. Levitt decided not to take away Jeff's policies. So we, we literally have two sets of policies, procedures that govern Utah County Attorney's Office, which has been problematic. And, and so when, when a person is held to a standard, what standard are we held to? That's the question. That's the issue. And, and so what's before you today is only those portions that you are supposed to review.
Well, I'm going to challenge that just a little bit, because the animal one is already our current facility use policy, 2.6 G.
I would tell you that there's probably a handful of people in this county that knows where that's at. Me being one of them, because I had to find it. It is hard to find that policy.
I know, but that's still our policy.
Richard, it is. Yes, it is. And our policy is now going to be in compliance with that policy by, if you adopt this today.
You know, so I think maybe the, maybe the confusion is, is I don't, I don't care if, if it's, if the county attorney's office puts all the county policies in their, in their policy manual. I think that's great. And I think the animal, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating that we take that out. I think that you leave that in. I just don't think that that's one that we vote on, because we've already voted on that with our facility use policy. It's already, it's already adopted.
The problem is, under our current rules, you have to approve all policies of department heads, elected officials, excuse me, elected officials who affect general county administrative matters, employment matters, and those kinds of policies, you're required to review those and approve them. If it relates to the statutory responsibilities of the elected official, like in this situation, like plea bargaining, plea bargaining policy, or a screening policy, you don't have any obligation to review that, nor do we want you to review those. Those are with, only with the county attorney. Similar to, if you were reviewing the recorder's policies, procedures, you'd be looking at this, what, what applies countywide that affects employment matters and affects, affects county administrative matters. You would not be looking at what kind of documents are recorded. Those are all statutory responsibilities of the county recorder. And I apologize for using the county recorder.
But my argument is, is that we have already reviewed and adopted those policies countywide for the county attorney's office already.
Well, our current policies are not consistent with the, with those policies.
And I, and I agree.
And this is why we're here today.
Well, and there are some. So if we go to the next one, 2.1, 2.01, on certifications, that one is not, has not been adopted by the county commission. It is different.
Correct, because we have attorneys in our office.
Because you have, the wording on that is just way different than we have on a countywide basis. When it comes, and I'll point this one out, because this is, this one is the computers and phones. We have a countywide computer use and phone use policy in the, in the county, but according to how the, the attorneys use it, and I'll, and I'll just pull it up. I mean, there's some things in here where, you know, the staff, the, the attorneys will be using, you know, they'll, they'll get information back, indecent, pornographic, lewd, you know, they'll get all kinds of information that's, that relates to their job. And in our county policy, we didn't, we haven't adopted that. So it's a, it's, I, I get it. We need to vote on that and say, yes, this is going to be different than our, our standard county policies that we have in place. And, and, and your office, then we've reviewed them and we accept them that they're different. I see that one being, being different. The driver's license and vehicle registration one, I don't see any difference between what is in that policy and what we have in the county. And the same with equipment, the expenditure requests, or leave without pay. You know, those are all county policies that I think we've already reviewed for all departments in the, in the county and adopted. The lunch hour and other breaks, I, that one's different. There's no, there's no doubt. That one's different than the rest of the county. The mileage reimbursement is, is different. You have some things in there that are not county policy. The, the money receipts and handling policy, we already have that. It's already been adopted in our, in the, in the county for all offices. So I would say that.
Which is also hard to find, by the way.
Yeah.
That was a difficult policy.
But we do have it, and it's been adopted for everyone. And then the office access and security, absolutely. That one's, that one's way different than, than other things that we have in the county. And that one's very specific to the county attorney's office. The outside employment looks exactly the same as what we have in county policy. We've already reviewed and accept. And then the rest of them, all the way from work hours, remote, vacation time, overtime, sick, sick funeral and military staff members, staff members, conduct, dress and, and privacy, grant application management, and county vehicles, every single one of those are different. And so I agree, they all need to be voted on by the county commission, because they're different than what we've already accepted. It's just those, those few in there, we've already reviewed them. We've already accepted them for the entire county, including the county attorney's office. And so I don't see any reason for us to be doing that again. And you can, it's not, not to say that you can't put it into your policies. You can write, you can write it into your policies and say, follow the county policy, which you basically have done.
Okay, so, and maybe I'm not being clear. Under our current policies, the, the county attorney's office, some of them are different. More, the ones you talked about that refer to like animals, that's the revised version. The previous version is different. And you go through these, a number of policies are different than what is allowed by the county. So we have differing policies. We're trying to bring those back in line with what you've previously approved, which is why we're here today. You've identified additional policies that are a little bit different, because our, our dress standards might be a little bit different than what's in public works or in another department, sheriff's office, who has uniforms. Our, so our, those policies might be slightly different for the, for the Utah County Attorney's Office. But, but again, what you're required to approve, at least review and consider approving, are those policies that affect county administration and employment matters. And everything that's left on this list, after number one, affects those things. Everything else that's left off this list affects the statutory responsibilities of the elected county attorney. And that's why it was divided the way it was divided. So these are the things that affect, apply to general county administrative, county vehicle policy, county money handling. Those are county administrative, which, again, you're required to review those on your agenda and consider those for approval. And then if it's something else, again, going back to the screening policy or something like that, you're not required, in fact, you're, we're asking you not to do that.
Right.
And you would not be reviewing those kind of policies. That's not what's here before you today. What's here now is those revised, those focused, this list of what you would be approving, not all of the county attorney's policies and procedures. You're only going to approve these specific ones that, again, either touch employment matters or county administrative matters, which is, which we, it's already, you have to approve those things.
So Rob, I asked.
We can't operate without them.
I asked, I asked this question. I said, if these, if we have this conflict between the two county attorneys of the past, one policy this way, one policy this way, and they had to go through the process of the legislative body adopting them, show me the agenda. Show me the agenda where we actually approved one and we approved the other without vacating. And I haven't seen that yet. So I'm, I'm questioning if we even went through that process in the past.
My understanding is that we put both of those on the agenda eight years apart, or seven years apart from each other, approve them without vacating the previous version. That's my understanding.
So, I mean, I haven't seen that.
I, I have not went and searched for that. I was told that by the department. That was, I'm, I'm the messenger here. I'm not the one who drafted these and that revised them. And you know that Sandy Johnson's the one that's been doing that for our office in, in preparation for the transition. She's been working with, trying to finalize these, get these back to, so we don't have a conflict, number one. And number two, in preparation so that when Jeff Gray walks in, and again, I've said this last time and, and time before that as well, he knows, he has the ability, day one, to make whole-scale changes to these policies. If it's going to affect these kind of policies, he has to bring them back to you, because it's county administrative or county elected, excuse me, employment information, employment administrative has come back. And he knows that. And when I've talked to him today, he was fine with the ones that are here on this list, except for 1.02 organizational structure. Everything else he was fine with, in my discussion with him today. And he sent that email, and I should forward to the other two. I didn't realize you didn't get it.
So why did he not think, why did you think that 1.02 was fine to put in here, and then it's not fine to put in here?
I think 1.02 is kind of a little bit of a gray, and let me tell you why. Because 1.02 talks about the organization. Right now, we have a staffing plan.
Right.
And those positions on 1.02 are within the staffing plan currently. And the existing staffing plan as of 10, whatever day today is, the 25th or 26th, excuse me, that is the current staffing plan is in what's in 1.02. And so it didn't see it as an issue of putting it on here. He, he didn't want to have it on here, because he, he does plan on making some changes to the structure. And communicated some of those changes to me today that he was thinking about doing, which is fine.
And the staffing plan, I mean, it does deal with, like you mentioned, you're ticking off those things. It does deal with employment.
Right. And, and what's happening, and I'll tell you, let me explain that to you. He said between November 9th and November 30th, it's his plan to seek counsel with the county commission to modify the staffing plan for 2023. So that's the, he thought it was a little premature to have that one on, because he is, his intention is to ask you to modify our staffing plan as you're adopting the budget between November 9th, that's the day after the election, and November 30th, which is your public hearing, which you'll be setting soon, hopefully, for your budget, to have that discussion with you about modifying the staffing plan as to what his vision of the county attorney's office will look like for 2023. That's why he said, don't put that on there now, because I'm going to make some modifications. And that's going to happen in November. That's what his plan is, to have that discussion with you in November.
Well, my point is, is that it does deal with employment.
It does.
And, and that's one of the criterias in which you said the commission has to.
Correct.
That were mandatory to do.
Correct. And I think the, the difference is with that one is that, that's going to be modified right now. He's not looking at animals or the money handling policy or work hours. He's not looking at those things between, in November. What he's looking at is, what's my upper management going to look like in 2023? And so he's going to be having discussions, in my discussion today, he's hoping to have discussions with you in November, after the election, to, to talk about what his structure will look like in 2023, and then modify the staffing plan accordingly, to be consistent with that vision.
See, and I think maybe there's a misconception. My idea with this is not to limit the county attorney's office with it, but to give them the most flexibility with it. Because if it turns out to be, you know, the, the equipment, driver's license, you know, those things are already, they're, they're already, you know, approved and been reviewed in, by the county commission, by the legislative body. And so there's no need to put it into another plan that's been voted on, because then if, if it is, let's just say that, for instance, the, the equipment 2.04, we go through a process and we change it in, on the commission meeting. Then we have to also go through and, and, and change it on the attorney's office, because it was voted on. And now it's, it would be in, it'd be in conflict with what they, what, what, what we have. And so I, I think that if we just have, and we just say, your office, the county attorney's office, you go down through your process and say, all the, all, all the ones that have already been reviewed and accepted by the county commission, you know, those are the ones that we're adhering to. The ones that are outside of that, or that over, are, are more, or they want to do less than, then they have to come before the legislative body. And the, and those are the other ones. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 out of these bullet points that are different than what we already have in county policies or in our code.
So let me address that if I could. So, yeah, I think what we're trying to do here, and if I can help to understand, is we have two separate sets of county attorney policies, procedures. And then you have the county, county government policies, procedures that apply to different things, vehicles and money handling and, and those things. What we're trying to do is to take these other sets and put them together and make them mirror or reference, which is, most of these have done, just reference, the county government policies. Right now, they don't. Or if they do, they reference the wrong number.
Well, we can, we can rectify that by just saying, the, the county attorney's policies and procedures, you know, of the past are, are now going to be substituted by, you know, the current policies and procedures that are being implemented as, as, as we have outlined, or they apply to county policies and procedures that have already been reviewed and established.
And it's not giving you the authority to amend. It's giving you authority to approve, right? So, so when you, when you're looking at, you have the ability to approve the county attorney's policy procedures, not to go through and amend them. You have the ability to approve them. And I get, I'm asking you to do that.
And how do you get rid of the old ones?
And so what, what we, what we should do, and what we are doing, is saying, these will, if, in effect, replace all the old ones.
Okay.
As it relates to these numbers, it will replace all of those. The screening policies, all that other kind of stuff, that's not for you to worry about. That's the, the current county attorney, and the new county attorney will worry about that when he comes in. And that's, and he can do that on his own. He can, he can come in January 3rd, and on January 4th says, this is the new policy.
Sure.
And, and never comes before you.
Right.
These are the ones that are trying to, again, pull the, from the two areas, bring them in, into compliance and consistent with the current county policy. Now, I, I realize that most of them are, at least a good portion of them, just reference, like the animals, just again, just references the policy.
Right.
There are some that have some differences. Like you mentioned, the equipment. The equipment references, if you have, if you lose your equipment, you should report to the county attorney. And that is a, a small nuance, then that's, might be a little bit different than you might see on a countywide basis for, for equipment. It may see a department head. It references county attorney here. Driver's licenses, that's pretty, that's pretty consistent with county policy. You ought to have a driver's license. If we're going to drive vehicles, you got to have a driver's license. So licensures, same thing. It's, we require certain licensures, because we are attorneys and we're required to have bar licenses. And so we, those are required. Those are not required at every department. But those, again, are, touch on the employment side of this. So, so that's why we're here for this.
So on the animal side? So on the animal side again?
Please.
So you had two policies that were different on that one?
We had two policies. And when we brought those two policies, uh, basically what we did is we just, we referred to the county's policy. So we're eliminating, whatever policies we had before, we're eliminating it and referencing the county policy. That's what we're doing. We're trying to make it so there's no issue here. I, I think that's, and, and I hope that, I mean, maybe I'm not speaking correctly. I apologize if I'm not. I mean, what we're trying to do here is to bring it, to be in accordance with the county's policy. And most of these, you're going to see that. It's just referencing them. Animals is one of those. So that's, that's what we're trying to do here. And, and like I said, I, I had the conversation with, with Jeff today, and he was fine with all of these, except for the organizational structure, because he wants to talk to you about it in November. I, I don't know what else you'd like me to do, um-
Well, and Jeff doesn't have the full, I mean, I've talked with him, and he, he, he admits that he's seeing it from complete arms length. And so he's like, I, I, what he wants is more flexibility all the way through.
Sure.
I get it that you're trying to, but again, I guess my-
You're trying to clean up a mess. That's what we're trying to do.
And, and, and the thing, the thing that's interesting is, I don't know why, because I still haven't seen where, uh, they were voted on, Jeff Buman's policies were voted on, and then, uh, you know-
I can go back and pull those for you if you'd like.
Dave Leavitt's have been voted on because I, I think we're starting a new process where it almost appears to me like they were adopted in a county, or in the, in the, you know, the attorney's policy. And then this one was adopted in their own internal policies-
Yeah.
-without coming to the commission. And now we're going outside and trying to correct something on the inside, which I think I would like to give whatever flexibility they, they, they need inside as much as possible. Um-
I'm just trying to comply with their, uh, the county's policy, which requires us to come to you if it touches employment matters and county administrative matters. I keep saying the same thing.
Well, I don't, I don't think that any department can step outside of county policy unless they come to us anyway. They can't say we're going to be-
And most of the time, what you're seeing, Commissioner, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, is, uh, clarification as it relates to that department. And, and, and we don't have a countywide, for example, a countywide, uh, uniform policy or countywide dress policy because we can't. Uh, each department's so much different as to what that would look like. So, so we put that in here as what we think it should be for the county attorney's office. And I didn't put that in. It's been put there way before me. Um, and that's what we're here to ask you is look at that. Uh, certifications, we, you could not have a countywide certification other than to say, you got to have a certification that's, that's for your own job, right?
And I totally get those. And I think those should be voted on by-
Sure.
-by the, by the commission because they're different than what we don't have or what, what we do have. Some, in some cases, we don't have a, you know, a, a dress policy because we don't want everybody walking around in steel toe boots because they have to do that on the road crew, you know, or whatever the case may be. So I, I get that. And I think those need to be voted on. But the others, I, I don't think they need to because we've already voted on them. They're already, they're already in place. So I'm, and I'm ready to make a motion if, if we're ready for a motion or if there's more conversation.
I'm ready for a motion.
Go ahead. What, what, go ahead and describe what you're considering.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the revised Utah County Attorney's Office policies and procedures. Um, looking at the list that was provided to us, uh, which we can give to, to Alice for, for the record, excluding the 1.02, which is the organizational structure, 2.00, the animals, 2.03, 2.04, 2.05, 2.06, 2.09, and 2.11. And that would leave all the others, which I said was about 12 or so in place that are different than what we already have, on the basis that, uh, as a county, we have already reviewed those, um, and accepted those, um, as, as county policies, and we expect that they'd be followed.
I think that sounds reasonable. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Um, I, I mentioned Terry's listening, and she sent over the resolution that was approved by, on Jeff Buman's policies from 2008 to 2010. So I, I just have that just now, so.
We probably should put it on the agenda to vacate them.
Yeah. I, I mean-
I would say, yeah, let's do that.
So what, to clarify my understanding of your motion is that you're approving all the policies except for the ones you mentioned.
Right.
Okay. So then those policies would be what's-
Because we don't need to approve them because they've already been approved.
Well, those policies would be what's currently in our existing county attorney's policy, which we have two sets of, as it relates to 2.00, as it relates to 2.03, as it relates to 2.04, et cetera.
Can we resolve that by vacating? If we're going to vacate Jeff Buman's policy that was passed from 2008 to 2010?
That's, that's the possibility.
And just say, follow county policy.
Well, and, and right now, even this policy you're, you're looking to adopt, it says here that any policies that are on, in conflict would, are hereby rescinded. I mean, that's, so, so that was always our intent is not to, but there are, um, I'm, I'm fine with these policies that you, you have here. I, I just mentioned that if we have conflicts, we may still have conflicts on these existing policies you pulled out.
Yeah. Can we put on the agenda to vacate the old policies though?
I'll talk with-
And then I think that'll at least reduce and minimize the number of conflicts that we see.
Okay. I'll pull them out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on agenda number 13. Um, I asked, um, Tim to review this and, uh, what, if any impact there is on ongoing contracts, ARPA funding for the wells and the pipeline, uh, et cetera. So could you speak to this for a few minutes?
Yes, Commissioner Tim Taylor, uh, from the county attorney's office. So with regards to, in a, in, in a nutshell, what we're doing is that we are taking the hat off of the special service district and just putting that same hat onto a local district. So any obligations, contracts, um, anything that the SSD currently has under its portfolio will be under the same portfolio of the local district. So with regards to specifically the ARPA funding or, or anything like that, any contracts that the special service district approves is still going to be in effect with the local district.
So no changes to all the-
There will be no-
-ongoing contracts we've got in place now, construction work that's going on now.
Yes, exactly. And so, um, so this is the initiation resolution. So when, if you decide to go forward with it, in the main resolution, it will talk about that and it'll lay out with regards to all these obligation, the contracts that will still be in effect. And so, and what we've done is that we've gone through the statute, taken all the language from the statute, put that into your resolution, and so you'll be able to see that. I'm not sure that I, maybe I gave you the resolution, um, with regards to what we are projecting if this does continue to go forward, but that is the one we've already prepared.
And is, will, will this be a discussion I'm at the next, uh, soldier summit?
We have put this on the agenda, yes, sir. We have.
And that, at that meeting, they'll accept this change that-
Well, and-
Or a discussion that-
Yeah, well-
Is transition.
Yeah. The thing about it is, is that, um, that board doesn't have any authority to really deny or accept. It's you right here. It says the-
Just going to acknowledge-
Exactly.
It's a new existence then, okay.
Exactly. And so what we put it on there also is so that the public can be aware. So if they want to come to the next special service district, that they could be heard to.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just want to, anything else, Commissioner?
For the work on this, um, I think it's needed and necessary. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. No questions.
Hey, we have a, we have a motion for agenda number 13.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13.
Second?
And I, I'll, uh, also motion to approve that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It passes 3-0. Now we're, uh, number 15 approved tax, tax auctions included in
All right. Um, get there.
So Adam, that county attorney's office, I, I do know that, uh, Mr. Jordan and his counsel are here. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Great. We'll have him come up at the appropriate time. Um, can we just go through these? Because I know there's, there's a, there's a number of these that, uh, we had continued. Um, and if we can just kind of go through them one by one. According to how we have them listed on the agenda. Just trying to get there. 15. So I'm, I'm not concerned about the recommendation letter. That's number one on there.
Okay.
Um, but the Natasha Jordan Family Trust is the, is the first one.
Yeah. So, um, the, the question on here is that they're asking for an abatement of the rollback taxes that were due in, uh, from 2019. Um, if you recall, this is just a little brief history. Uh, they were taken off of green belt back in July of 2019. Uh, they, they then took it to the Board of Equalization in, in October of that year and, and, and it was denied. Um, they did not appeal to the state record, uh, the state tax commission. And so, uh, that is, that is, uh, a, a big piece of our, our recommendation, um, because we, we don't show that there is a legal or factual basis to grant the request. Um, they, they no longer have an appeal right. Um, and, and so that, that was, that was, uh, our recommendation.
I think now, um, it was because the properties were not in one parcel, correct? Is this the one that, trying to get back to my notes on it. Um- No proof of production.
Yeah. This is the one with the owners saying the property wasn't contiguous and needed more time for-
I think it got a little confusing because originally they, they just listed the one five and a quarter acre lot. But then, um, and that's what was rolled back in 2019. And then they acquired a three acre, uh, parcel, not anywhere near this parcel, in, in a different one. So it was kind of confusing which, what they were asking for. They want, they want them all on green belt, but that's not what this, you know, um, venue is-
Okay.
For. So, um, so neither of, of, so the one, the five and a quarter acre parcel that was taken off, they appealed and they were denied by the Board of Equalization. The three acre parcel, um, they were, uh, rolled back when they purchased it. It had previously been on by the, uh, previous owner, the, uh, Paul Pryor, uh, dairy, dairyman in Springville. And, um, so because the other parcel wasn't on green belt, this one couldn't qualify because it was under, and that was before we did urban farming. And so they never appealed that rollback either. So, um, so it kind of got confusing as to what, where it came, where it came to this-
They're not here.
This point. Yes.
They are here.
Okay.
So, but that's the history. That, that's the history of, um, and so the, the larger parcel, which is out in the Robert Stevens subdivision development, um, still is not on green belt, has not met the production requirements, uh, currently. They have not appealed the last denied application. So it hasn't gone through the process of the Board of Equalization, and it kind of just skipped and got here.
We're learning what's happened as we're hearing this set out loud. So, um, this is Peter Jordan, a client here that's with me. Um, the, he, we, he thought he was applying to get reinstated into green belt status. And it, and it's in what we've provided. It was dated May 1st, um, application for review of Board of Equalization. Somehow that appears to have gotten stuffed into this request for an abatement, which I don't think was initially even what he was, I mean, he thought that was part of it, but didn't know that that was on a separate track. And we're learning that today. So, um, in our estimation, his current application to have it, because both properties were originally greenbelt. And then when he brought in this application, they told him, well, you need to make these two contiguous. So he did. Legally, they were put into a trust, um, so that they're one property for purposes of review under, by the, I guess, the Board of Equalization.
But not physically.
Not physically, but they're part of the same operation. And they've, and then he did detail, and I assume you have this stuff that we've provided that, that shows the efforts they've gone to, to make these things, uh, you know, that, to use them as a farm, farming, uh, operation. Um, so, uh, I guess, on an equitable basis, it would be a hardship to have to pay that rollback tax while they're working and spending thousands of dollars to farm the place. Um, he thinks, we did provide, uh, the guy who is farming them, uh, provided his information on what they've taken off the property in the last two years. And we've been told that that has to be a two-year continual production increase. And, uh, we're unaware, and maybe it's for the Board of Equalization to explain how that's not enough. He thinks it is. I don't know, but, uh, so I think that's where we're at today.
So I got a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Yours, it's part of the Robert Stevens subdivision? Is that, is that correct? Are we talking, are we in the same area?
First phase.
The first five acres is-
It was the first.
Oh, the first one. So, so when you purchased the property, um, you, you purchased it under green belt?
Yes.
So you accepted, you accepted the, um, the liability of it, of it being on green belt, is what I'm saying during the purchase. You didn't ask the seller to go ahead and pay the rollback on it?
Correct.
We, we did talk about that, yes. But, um, I think-
We're going to need him to come up to the microphone if they want to speak. Yeah. With their name.
We, we spoke to the title company in great detail about green belt and what, what the requirements were and all that. And we understood it was going to stay in green belt. And then we were notified later that they were taking us out of green belt after a number of years and, and doing the steps that we were told to do. And so as far as your question, it was in green belt. We talked about pulling it out, and we, we said, let's keep it in. That's what we did. That's what we said.
So I guess-
But you never verified that the productions, I mean, it was producing when you-
Oh.
Under green belt?
I've, I've listed in here all the, all the different categories of, of production requirements. And I got it right from the state's website on agricultural use. And we've, we've made significant improvements. So now it's irrigated, where when we bought it, it wasn't irrigated. So it was easily, as far as a non-irrigated property, it was easily in green belt when we bought it. And then once we improved it and made it irrigated, then the requirements went up. And that's, I think, what the, what they're arguing is that we don't, we're not qualified for green belt, but we're the ones that improved it to make it irrigated now, whereas it wasn't before.
So who, who told you to put, I mean, to put the, you know, contiguous? We always see it as, as, uh, you know, land contiguous?
No. This was, this was over in the green belt division where I, where I went over there and spoke with them. And they told me that the next parcel we acquired to also farm, they said it, it didn't meet the minimum acreage. And so they said, the only way you could get it to qualify for green belt. Well, I should add that they told us that the first property was already in green belt over there. I don't know how there's this confusion. But anyhow, they did tell us that we had to make them one parcel because they were non- contiguous in order to get them both to qualify for green belt because the one was too small.
It's three acres.
So he was going on the advice that they gave him and to put it into the trust. So he did that and then made this application. And now we're standing here, apparently in the wrong place. I don't, for that particular piece, anyway.
Was there any written direction on this?
There's also, I mean, it's not necessarily the wrong place. So if he's trying to get into green belt and is trying to not pay the rollback because he's reestablishing green belt, then we do, there's the process of getting you into, into green belt, and then there's, which is a Board of Equalization thing. And then there's the process of abating or deferring those rollbacks, which happens in this meeting.
Right. And what he thought he was doing was applying to get back into the green belt, but we've ended up here on a, on the re- but we've ended up here on a, on the rebate, and we're learning this today, so.
Okay.
We, we filled out the form to abate the taxes as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be part of it.
And I think they got stuck together, and because we do have the application.
Yeah, to abate them, so you're in the right place to request.
But we also have the application for farmland assessment status.
And that's the other.
And that, that didn't get seen or was, got, got, uh.
Right, which is difficult for us to make.
With the other process.
Power Pryor?
Yes, we can prove, we have a letter proving production for the last two years.
Well, we have a letter from the guy who's farming it, saying what his production has been. Now, I don't know what the standard is for.
It's, it's been three years now that the letter covers, but we, we finally, we had had issues with the greenbelt status. And so finally, we just leased it to someone and asked him, get this thing up to production. Because when you, when you laser level it, it makes it so that the topsoil's destroyed and it doesn't grow very well. And so we asked a farmer that was in the area, we, we said, we'll lease it to you. Just get this thing up to production so we don't have any other issues. But in the end, it's our, it's our intention to farm it ourselves. And right now, it's temporarily leased, and I have no idea why it's still not in greenbelt. I, I really couldn't tell you, but we've, we've provided, I think, ample evidence of why it should be.
Yield in twenty twenty was two tons per acre of dry feed. Twenty twenty-one, twenty tons chicken manure is applied, let's see, the twenty-two, three by three bales, weighing roughly eighty, eight hundred and fifty pounds of bale. In twenty twenty-two, the yield was twenty-one tons of baled hay, thirty-five, three by four bales, about twelve hundred a bale. According to the guy who's farming it.
Yeah, because I see the images that you provided as well as to what's been going on this past year at least.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know if that meets the production level or not. Diane will have to, she's the one that assesses that to say if that's, if that, if that meets it for that category of land that you have, being irrigated or not irrigated, those categories.
Well, I listed the state requirements in the document, and, um.
It's, it's my client's belief that it does meet those standards, but I guess, you know, if there's a process where they can show us how it doesn't, you know, then I guess we can go from there.
Okay, Adam, do you have anything you want to add to it?
Yeah, um, you know, he, um, Mr. Rainier there was, was saying, you know, if, if there's a process for that. And, and that is the, the application for, for greenbelt status. Like they said, there may have been some, some issue that caused them to, to not be able to, to file for greenbelt. Speaking with Diane Garcia, she, she does not have an application for greenbelt, um, pending right now, or, and she hasn't denied one. And so that may be, uh, uh, as Commissioner Powers Gardner said, there's, there's two tracks here. They did provide some information, um, but it was my understanding that that was not for this, this proceeding. The, the, the paperwork that they were providing was not, was not, uh, directed at the twenty nineteen rollback tax, but was for the greenbelt moving forward. So it, it may be if.
It's the application there for the greenbelt status that was turned in. I guess it just got stuck to the other process.
Yeah, it may not have gotten.
Okay. So the, uh, it may be cleaner if we allow this to keep moving forward, let Diane, uh, look at it and deny it if she, if she doesn't think that it meets the production requirements, or.
Or approve if it does.
Or approve it.
So might I, should I, might I suggest that we continue this until after that? It looks like there was an application, but for some reason it probably, I mean, pieces of paper get stuck together. I would say we should continue this until after, um, the assessor's offices had a chance to review that application because it's hard for us to make a determination on abatement if we don't know the status of the greenbelt. So I would make a motion to continue this. How long do you think you would need, Diane?
Well, they, they'd have to provide me with an application, and I haven't provided them one.
So would you think, I mean, obviously they've got something they could hand you, would, one, one month, four weeks? Would four weeks be plenty?
That's an application for.
She needs to come to the, come to the microphone.
Okay.
We have agreement.
Oh, we need to have a microphone here.
So just probably.
The application that they keep showing is, is the appeal application for Board of Equalization. So they had filled that out and I guess handed that in along with the deferment papers, thinking it was all coming to the same thing instead of Board of Equalization and commissioners.
Do you think four weeks is enough to kind of sort through this?
Sure, yeah. And, and they did do an application that I denied like a year ago, a year and a half ago. But there isn't one that I've recently received, you know, within the last four or five months.
We can get that there then, I guess.
So, so I was going to continue this one month.
Yeah, because I agree, this is, this is, this is a step ahead.
I would agree. So I would say, I'm, so as we move through, let's continue that one.
That's your mo, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, are we, do we have other items in this?
Oh, okay, that's true.
So I figured when we make the, when we make the final motion, let's, let's continue that one for four weeks.
I assume we don't have to wait around for that one, you just have it, four weeks from today?
Yeah, I forgot what date it is, but yes.
Yeah, but I would get with Diane because you've got some other things that we'll need to get done before that time. Yep, so you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next one?
Okay, the next one is the Orem Orthodontic. And this one, I remember, we've had some discussion on the past about it too. I, I think it all centered around that this, this doctor said something about him being a, uh, temporary, or, see, I'm looking at traveling doctor is what he said, it, it said it was. And, and the question was, was, was he under the twenty-five thousand or whatever that status was? I know that's been a fluctuating number, um, a, at the time. And I think we, we continued it to see if we could get, um, some clarity from him on that.
Paul Letts, that's her with the Assessors Department. We have, and this was forwarded to Adam once received from the, uh, orthodontic office where the traveling dentist was or is, uh, participating in usage of his equipment. And yes, that, that other dental is complying and filing his equipment. So, um, as of right now, then that is sufficient for our office at this point in time.
That they're underneath that?
I don't know if that other entity is under, that I can't provide right now.
But the.
But he.
This one is?
This one would be, yes.
Okay, so it, it would make sense for us then to, um, to accept this one, uh, accept this one's appeal.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understood as well.
Okay, very good. Can we move to the next one? Luxury, this large luxury house. Um, I was just kind of confused by this one a little bit. My first reaction to this was, was on the denial side, just, uh, based off of what, what I read with it. But I was, uh, I just needed maybe a little bit more explanation or context with it. What was, what's going on here? I, uh, there's some Airbnb stuff that's, that's going on in, with it, and I'm, I'm not understanding what the full context of this is.
Okay, this is a home that is owned by this taxpayer that has written in for the appeal. He had decided to run this home as an Airbnb. And as you know, Airbnbs can cause problems within, um, neighborhoods as well as cities. Most cities don't have an ordinance for Airbnbs unless you're in a zoned area for like hotels, motels. We do find these things, they do pop up periodically, and we use what resources we have to verify that. And I forwarded Adam, uh, some ex, I've got some extra information showing, um, in fact, the link that you were provided shows the home itself, which they are currently still listing the home as an Airbnb as of yesterday, when that link was provided to you.
They said they took that off, is what I read.
That is not accurate.
Then the seventy thousand dollar value, that's personal property? Is that, is that what we're, because it's not obviously the value of the home, so.
Correct. There was no filing received, so of course, when a business doesn't comply, our office has the statute to, uh, place an estimation. So once the estimation is compiled using similar like businesses, and in this case, it would have been short-term rentals, it would have been other, um, Airbnbs or, um, model homes. And that's how that estimation was compiled. So that estimation was placed, then a twenty percent is added to that, which is ten percent of the taxes, or twenty-five dollars, whichever is greater, excuse me. And then a tax notice was sent, which is why this was coming before you today.
So I, I still feel the same after that, that it should be denied on, on, on that one.
I agree.
Excuse me, I concur, it should be denied.
Okay, this pass, passport furnishings.
Okay.
Give us some.
That was one I believe.
Said they never received their notice.
A lot of times when a business license is received, the information we receive on the business license is what has been, um, provided to the city when the business license is taken out. Now, unfortunately, in this case for passport, um, they didn't update their mailing address on any of their, or they didn't even forward their mail when they moved two locations ago. So by our office, uh, standards, unless we receive something returned, um, we, we usually use land records. We will use BES, which is the business licensure to pull mailing addresses from, and which is how we obtain the, the current mailing address that we have on file. Until recently, I believe, that is when it got changed, only because he had to submit something in writing to request the mailing address change. But he openly admitted, well, that was two, two addresses ago. Well, unfortunately, again, I said, do you not forward your mail when you move? That's most common practice, but not everyone notifies all entities that they have associations with when they do move. So sometimes we get left out of the loop, so that is how that came to be.
I'm inclined to deny that one.
Yes, I concur with you on that, yes.
And so the next one is this, um, Jennifer Orton, rejuvenating souls. She's claiming that she's under the twenty-five, the twenty-five thousand on this one.
Yeah.
I, I just, I, I don't know how it's verified or whatever, but. She was estimated then?
Yeah, she was estimated.
She does, she does list her equipment down here, which comes out to about four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, this was provided to us after the estimation.
Yeah, it is after. I granted that it is after. Given the.
Yeah.
The information that, oh, go ahead.
With this one, I would be inclined to go ahead and, um, approve.
Approve.
Only because, again, if, if you don't have the, the taxable value there, there's no need to assess something that isn't actually there, so I would, I would approve that one.
Okay. And I, I feel the same way.
I, same way to approve that one.
Alright. Robertson Courtney. You rent a spa facility? And equipment?
This is one that was, um, held until this meeting. And I also provided the additional requi, uh, equipment list that was requested from Ms. Robertson. I'm not sure if you had received that. I sent it to Adam as well to provide. She has under purchase price of twenty-one thousand, so most likely going forward, she would be most likely under the assessed value as well, so.
So do you go under purchase price or do you go under market value?
We go under market value, but in this case, because the list was provided after the estimation was placed, the equipment is applied to the, the next year. It isn't normally applied to the current year until we resolve whatever underlying issue there is, if, if it need be.
So I'd be inclined on that one too, to accept that one.
Yeah.
And then the last one is this Timothy and Terry.
Which, which one was that, Commissioner?
This is the Timothy H. and Terry. Traer?
Yeah, our, our position was, was, uh, to, to abate that one.
And I'd write, and I'm inclined to do that.
That's the recommendation from the Recorder's Office.
Concur with that.
Okay.
That one's abatable. Abatable, abatable, yeah. Oh, I didn't make a list. Did you have the list of the ones that we were? Didn't write.
No, I didn't. I, when I was, made the motion, I was just going to make the motion as per discussion. I was just going to say as per discussion. I remember the first item was continued for four weeks, so do you want to put a date on that? And the others as per discussion. And they were all unanimous, so.
I, I did make a list here, um, I, I show that the, the Natasha Jordan matter, you wanted to continue.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. The Cardall Orthodontics, um, you wanted to approve.
Approve.
That one, uh, the.
We don't have a commission meeting in four weeks, so let's go five weeks on that one.
Okay.
Well, we better tell them then.
Okay.
Yeah, I can reach out to.
Can you reach out to them? I just realized that. Okay, sorry, go on.
Yeah, uh, the Orton matter, you also wanted to approve, and the Courtney Robertson matter you wanted to approve.
So moved.
And the, the large luxury homes?
Was denied.
That was denied?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I'll, I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Thank you. Okay. We have no other regular agenda. Any public comments? Any online, Alice? Then with that, file motion?
Oh, well, closed session.
We're going to close.
We'll go to closed session.
That's the motion, we're going to close.
Yes, we're good.